Mr. Please say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for all those that have looked at the agenda, we're kind of changing things up here. There's a new order of what we're doing, and I will remind everybody to please turn off their cell phones or silence them, please. So we'll start off, I'm going to want to remind everybody too, that during this meeting, if you want to make any comments, if you're on Zoom or if you're on the telephone Zoom, you just have to raise your hand or online. If you're going to do the telephone thing, you have to do star nine. And speakers will be called on the last four digits, the phone number, to unmute themselves by dialing star six. Okay. This also, we're going on, I feel like said, if anybody's read this agenda, it's a little bit different than what we're used to. Number one on the agenda was call the order and pledge allegiance, which obviously we have. Number two is special presentation and/or announcements. At this time, we don't have any special presentations that's not on the agenda or announcements. So now this is the public comment time. This is a public time for comments, excuse me, public comments regarding issues that would matter is not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the city council of Warrickham. Public comments period is not intended to be a question and answer period of conversation with council or city staff. Council members will, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions or of the presenter, but no action may be taken during, by the city council during the public comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare, report, or place an item on future agenda. Please speak from the podium. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide the, provide a minimum of seven copies. And please limit your remarks to five minutes. So this is a time for public comments. Do we have any public comments? Public comments. Alrighty. On this, on the agenda, we also had council and staff communication. So that would have been in conjunction to, if there was any public comments, then we would have went into council and staff communications in regards to those public comments. And they still was, as of that, you still wouldn't be any decision making, it just is, we could respond to that at that point in time. Okay, we're off to the consent agenda. This is, I'm going to open it up for public on that. So if there's anybody that has any questions about the consent calendar before we get into it, then now's the time for that, for the public, I'm opening it up for the public. So is there anybody in the public that would like to make, like to make a comment on the consent calendar? Okay. So I'll go into that. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, non-controversial, and will be enacted in one motion, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion, or a member of the audience, public wishes to comment on that item. And I forgot to say, we closed the public comment part of that section, so. They're already, good job. Five A, approval ratification, payments issued from July 12th, 2021 through July 25th, 2021. B, approval of minutes of regular meeting held on July 20th, 2021. C, approval of minutes of regular meeting held on July 27th, 2021. D, continuation of urgency ordinance number 855, the COVID-19 ordinance. E, continuation of urgency ordinance number 864, the fireworks ordinance. F, wave full text readings on, of all ordinances on the agenda. Orders shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Okay. Yes, Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I want to pull either B approval of minutes of the rate of the meeting of 2021 from the consent agenda.
Oh, for some clarification, okay, so pull that one. Okay. So pulling five B. For some clarifications, anybody else on any other? Yes, correct, I'm sorry. Is there any other ones? Good. To address a. Approval and move and board.
This is Debbie Baird, I'd like to make the motion to accept five A, C, D, E, and F as presented.
Motion. A, C, D, E, and F by Debbie Baird, do we have a second? Second. Alright, we'll do, whoops, yeah, we'll do roll call on that, and we'll go back to five B. Joan?
Hi.
Okay, Debbie?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Okay, and Cory? Okay, that part is okay.
Your vote, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I guess I should do mine too, huh? Yes, I. Oh, boy, I'll take a good start here. Alright, Mr. McCoy?
So I just wanted, I want to double check. Three, the second paragraph, following council discussion, that council member Freeman moved to suspend further consideration. I thought we wanted to ask more questions, one more time, for the question, so maybe I'm, I may be in error.
Okay, so that's on, let's find that.
I didn't think, I did not think we were suspending it totally.
The Wildlife Protection Plan?
No, he's actually talking about two. The Environmental Restoration Strategy, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, two, correct.
All environmental restoration.
Do you remember, did you, did you use suspend?
That's not the word that I used, that what I think I said was, it had been before us three times already, and if we hadn't answered all the questions, then we should table it.
Yeah, that's what you said, table, that's what you said.
I thought, I thought there were further questions.
Yeah, there was.
You and I spoke about this after the meeting.
Yes, absolutely, there was further questions that were supposed to be presented, yeah.
So can we just change the wording on that? My motion.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not sure what.
As long as she agrees.
Yeah.
That she said what you changed it.
Yeah, I just don't want to drop it out totally.
No.
I, well, actually, I wouldn't mind doing that, but because of my concern and our attorney's concern about the outcome of it. So it doesn't really bother me that it said suspend, I did notice that. But I think that the wording that we used was table, wasn't it?
Table, yes. It was, definitely was what you said, the table, for sure.
I understand it was table.
Yep.
Because you had further questions.
Yeah, I know, we all, I think there was a few of us that further questions, yeah. I don't, I don't think it was just you and I, I think it was.
But I'm not really looking for it to come back anytime soon.
Well, that's, that's understandable, but unfortunately, that's not always the way it goes.
Do you know what any of, do you have any idea what your further questions were? Because you said there's still questions, and then.
Well, we were.
You asked the questions, none of us, none of the four of us responded to.
There are some closed session items that need to be discussed with our attorney.
Fair enough. So, okay, so anyways, this still goes back to the verbiage on this. So is the motion then, if there's, if somebody does make a motion that, that we change this, the verbiage on this, to what was stated at that meeting?
You know, I did watch this, I did watch this because it was quite entertaining to watch. That, I mean, yes, the discussion, it was quite lively.
Yes.
But I was trying to, I was trying to remember what my exact words were, and I watched it a couple of days ago. I didn't actually say for further consideration, I just said to table the item.
Yeah, that's right. I, I, I know it was tabled, but I know that still means bringing it back anyways.
And I'm not saying you said, what I'm saying is, only I heard, and I think it actually happened twice, that I brought, you brought up, are there any, what questions, what came up was, we have more questions? And then when I asked, was the questions, might be, and nobody responded to, to any questions.
Right.
So I think when I talk to you, I'm just unsure of. You know, what questions we have.
Right.
Mister.
Yes, Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, that's true. And. Mister Mayor. Our attorney is on the phone, our attorney is on the phone. Don, may I ask him?
What do you?
Don, do you recall, are you on the phone? Yes, you are, but Don, our attorney, Don Henyon, is muted. Arthur, can you unmute him?
Yes, it has to. Should happen to all attorneys.
Don't pay any attention to that.
He'll be back Thursday night.
There you go. Do you recall the exact verbiage of the motion, Don, when we were having discussion?
My recollection is, you just said you moved to table the item.
That's, that's right, not for further discussion.
You had a motion to substitute table for suspend.
Yes.
But I would also take out further consideration, because my motion didn't say that, it just said to table.
Let's, yeah, anyways, yeah, it worked out the same way anyways. It's table, it can be brought back, obviously.
It can be, but it's, that wasn't the way that I said it. So if we're going to be exact, let's be exact.
Well, if we're going to be very exact, can, does Liz have a transcript of it? Doesn't she, I mean.
Arthur does.
I would say we get Liz to do, to listen through a verbal transcript and tell us what we said.
Not right now.
We have a recording of it, yes.
Yeah.
Recording.
A verbal transcript.
So.
Or some kind of a tape, yeah.
Yeah, so at this point, that, obviously, that can't happen at this point in time, so we either table that.
I can make a motion.
Or we can make a motion to table it, and then we find, and we get, they bring back the proper verbiage. And we. Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's probably the simplest. Yep. Okay. I, I think we're under agreeance to go to. Do we need?
You asked.
Consensus of the rest of the council. Yes, do we have a consensus to bring this back with the proper verbiage?
With the, with the verbatim verbiage.
Yes.
And we'll all have the opportunity to, to watch it again, because it's quite good.
Okay, good. Alright. Alright. So back to the agenda, so number. Five B, it's basically tabled, again, so we can bring it back. Alrighty. Now we're. Number six is public hearings, which right now, we have none of those. That's, people need to, like I said, read how we're doing this. There's going to be a reason why we're going to be doing all these in the future, just so everybody knows. So if you have a copy of the agenda, it'll be more understanding for the future. When these, when these agenda items come back up, you'll understand why we're doing it the way we're doing it. So we're going to move on now to number seven, which is old business. And I'm going to, it's on the shopping cart ordinance, and I'm going to open this up to public comments. This is time for public comments on this. And there's no public comments, then I'll close the public comment section of this, go on to the business. Seven A, discussion possible action, shopping cart ordinance. Presentation, ordinance to amend Warrickham Municipal Code Title V by adding to Title V and enacting Chapter 525 pertaining to the shopping cart control and finding. That ordinance is exempt from CEQA. And this one is Don, since we got him on the line here, Mr. Henyon?
Yes, sir, I, the ordinance is fairly self-explanatory. What may not be readily understandable is the fact that there is several state statutes on shopping carts, which expressly declare them to be preemptive over local control. So we could, we could supplement the state law, but we couldn't do anything that's contrary to the state law. So I drafted this so that it's an attempt to be fair to property owners, to the city, to the businesses, the responsible businesses, and basically, it applies to any business that supplies shopping carts or laundry carts to customers or the public. And you are making a finding. Now, let's, let's also explain that I was working off Steve's notes on this. And Steve's note said, what you were looking for was to have a preview of the ordinance before it was introduced to you, so that you could make comments and make any changes, directly changes you like, and that sort of thing. And then it'd be brought formally back to you for introduction, and then another hearing for, for adoption. So this is, this is just your chance to tell, tell me if, if this is what you were looking for, what you were expecting. And it's easy at this point to modify it real life, as long as it doesn't contravene the state law. So you're making a finding in it, that wrecked, dismantled, or abandoned shopping carts constitute a nuisance. And you're requiring that all shopping carts have ID signs on them that have specified information, and that the stores have signs posted by their exits that any unauthorized removal of the carts is a violation of state and local law. And then what you're directing the businesses to do is to submit to the city a containment plan, how they plan on keeping their carts and making sure that they're not stolen, or if they are taken, how they're retrieved, and that sort of thing. And then the city staff looks at those and approves it or modifies it. And they have to submit this plan once a year. Then you are saying that you're expecting that if there's that there is going to be a business called a cart retrieval operation, which gives the businesses a certain exemption from fines and, and the expense of having the lock wheels on the shopping carts. So the cart retrieval operation would demonstrate that the carts will be actively located within one mile of the business premises and respond to complaints from the public or notifications from city enforcement personnel in a manner which results in the retrieval of the carts within 24 hours. And if you're an existing business and you've had 25 or more violations, then you're required to change your carts into a lock wheel system by January 2025. If you're a new business, you're expected to use the startup business with, and this is a business with 10 or more carts. You've got to have the lock wheel cart mechanisms installed. And then, of course, if you don't submit a plan, or you don't comply with, in order to put in the lock wheels, then you're subject to a $1,000 penalty and $50 a day until you do comply. Now, there's an exemption from, now there's a procedure for the city to notice that the business owner, that you intend, the city intends to impound the carts. And then they have three days in order to pick up the cart. And then if we have to go ahead and, and impound it, they have three days to pick, pick it up and, and retrieve them. And if after there are three violations of the carts, they, they didn't retrieve it within a six-month period, and this is all the state statute stuff, the maximum you could do is impose a $50 fine. So it's a, but there's an exemption from the fines and the wheel locks if you use a shopping cart retrieval service. And, and it's a crime, it's made a crime to remove the card ID or even to remove the cart from the business with the intent to temporarily or permanently just take the possession of the cart from its owner. And that's, that's my brief summary, I think it covers it, but obviously, any questions you have, I'd be happy to elaborate.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to council now. Mr. McCoy, I think you had your hand raised first.
Yeah. Don, when you talk about an inventory of carts, that they'll do a complete inventory of all carts maintained on or in the business, the owner's responsible for doing that and giving us the, the number to us, how many carts they have?
Right. They, they've got a, that's, that's part of their containment plan, they'll tell us how many carts they have. They'll, and they will assign an actual ID number to each cart.
Okay, thank you, and this is Council McCoy, Council Mayor McCoy again. If is there, I don't see anywhere in this draft, as I looked at it, that there is, like, a number, for instance, we have a hardware store that maybe have five carts, we've got a laundry, a couple laundries, one of them have 10, the other has 12. We've got a bigger retailer that has 500 carts. Is there a minimum number of carts that we have in order to enforce this?
Actually, the enforcement is related more to how many times they violated. They're, like, for instance, a new business in order to be required to put in the lock carts has to have 10 or more carts. And so we say that there, but for the existing businesses that are being controlled, we're, we're saying, okay, you will, if you, if you blow it 25 times, then, then you're going to have to put in the lock wheel things. So if you want something, a minimum number of, of carts before the ordinance applies, I can certainly modify it and put that in.
Okay. And then I thought this was a good idea, putting in a, a barrier so that the cart doesn't go beyond such a barrier in a store. But if, when we have those, and I have seen them, what do they do then? Just leave the cart there and carry their groceries out of the car, come back and get two more bags, come back and get two more bags, until you've got them all out in the car? What, what have you seen with that, when you, as you were doing this?
I understand that what it is, is a magnetic strip all along the outside.
Oops.
And unload the whole thing, and then, you know, as some people do, leave the cart there or take it back to the store or whatever, but it just, you can't, with this locking mechanism, you can't take it off of the premises without its wheels locking up.
Don, you know that sneaky gremlin we used to have that freezes up about every 19 minutes?
Yeah.
It just froze you, we got to last like 15, 20 seconds, and that's what we lost about half a minute. That gremlin is persistent.
Okay, well, let me see if I can remember what I said. But I, what I said was that the, that where it's mentioned about the number of carts is applicable to new businesses starting up. And that if you have, you have to have more than 10 carts before you would have to put in the locking wheel mechanism. But for existing businesses, it's all based on number of violations. And if they have 25 or more violations, then they must have the wheel lock. And as I understand how the wheel lock process operates, there is a magnetic strip that surrounds the parking lot, the entire parking lot of the business. And so you can take that cart to your car, unload it, or leave it at your car, or take it back to the store. And so there should be no problem with, you know, two bags of groceries or anything. It's just, it's just making sure that the cart is not leaving the premises of the business owner.
I was referring to barriers at the door when you leave the store, Don, when you have a barrier at the door, which is mentioned in this, in this.
As, as I understand it.
Or what has, you know, as you've talked to people or looked at this or studied it, what have been your findings as to how people, if, if the barrier is at the store and they can't pull it out, well, I've seen that before. How did, I mean, all I see is pulling them out, making trips out of the car, coming back. Have you seen anything differently?
I did not write this for a barrier at the store, at the entrance. What I wrote it for was for them to put a sign at each exit saying it's unlawful to take the carts off the lot.
So we could take that barrier part out, we can remove that, correct?
Yes, absolutely, I don't, I don't recall it being in there, so.
And then on, on line 188, 189, where you talked about the half of January 1st, 2025, people would be required, businesses would be required. Why do we have to wait three years? Why can't we say when you buy new, when you replace your old carts with new carts, you will then have to replace them with ones that have that electronic barrier?
Good, yeah, it just, it just wasn't mentioned on, on Steve's notes, I can, I can.
Yeah, you could, you could obviously use any system you want for that. The problem is that there is, and, and that would get around the vested interest problem that, that I was trying to ameliorate. But remember, if you're saying every time that you replace a cart, that means the first cart that they replace, they're going to have to put in that magnetic strip all the way around the business, and that'll probably be expensive.
That's why.
And they don't put in one cart at a time?
No.
When all their ready's goes out, they're buying 100 carts. So they're making a, I mean, you know, if they can leave 177 carts, one, one store can. In our city yard, they're obviously got, and they still have you there, you know, they've got 500, 600 carts, and I don't see that as an issue. I see this issue with a smaller retailer.
Yeah.
I mean, we have more and more of real small retailers that only have four, or five, or six carts.
That's why.
Now, I didn't make a list of them, and I'm surprised, I can, I can probably have 20 on my list, and have less, and have 10 or less carts.
Yep.
So I'm trying, I mean, I'm just trying to look at making it, and I think that if you set an arbitrary date, I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying, you're saying that you want somebody to kind of take you want to ameliorate it, I think you said, you want to take, you want to take some initiative? The Columbia's, we're not seeing them take initiative when we contact them five and six times.
I went with the political view on that one. I believe the mayor told me that he had talked to some of the business owners, and he was told that at a certain length of time, they didn't have a problem with replacing, putting wheel locks on their carts. So I kind of blended the concepts with violations and the cart retrieval service, so that I, I'm just guessing that a business that has four carts isn't going to have 25 violations. So. And they could probably also hire the cart retrieval service for fairly cheap, and that gets them out of all the fines and all the liabilities.
Or was, you're writing your head for that would come do it, so.
Well, that's up to them, that's not up to us.
I've got one last question on line 36, well, 363, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68. Within three business days after receiving the notice from the city, that means, obviously, we're sending a notice out, and we have their carts, correct?
We are sending, we're calling, we're emailing, we're notifying.
Okay, and so, and then we have to decide who's doing that, who we're putting that on.
Correct.
Um, I mean, that might be something, I think you say, that's going to fall probably on Willow.
Well, that's what my question is here in a second, yes.
And then any owner who fails to retrieve the abandoned cart within this chapter in excess of three times during a consecutive six-month period shall be subject to a $50 fine for each day in each cart that we hold to. So then with that, they would have, they'd be able to have carts with us, and we would notify, and they're more, longer, they're, they're longer than three days, and we would notify them. And then they'd be able to have carts again longer than three days, we would notify them. And then they would be able to have carts there three days again, we would notify them. And if that's in a six-month period, then that starts all over again in the next six-month period, correct?
Let's start over in the next six-month period, that's part of the state statute and part that I can't play with.
So why does it say during any consecutive six-month period? And you think, if, if that has no. And you think, if it, if that has no bearing on it, why is, why is that there? I mean, I know that laws are convoluted, but.
Right.
Why would we put that in there?
I have no clue what what the sausage was that went into that grinder.
I need more information on that. That's one, that's a major area. This looks like a boilerplate. I thought at one point in time we had given Don, like, we had two that we'd given him that we liked.
That we did, and then then we, I think Steve, Steve kind of consolidated stuff, and then, like, you're going back to. Some of these questions. We did say, um, ten, I know for a fact, that we did say anybody with. Ten carts or more, and it was everybody, not just, not just new businesses, it was ten carts or more is what we. Distinctively said, or I know for a fact on our last meeting about that. Um. What was your?
No, it's in that.
Well, I mean, this goes back, this goes back though eight months.
Yeah, that's a problem.
This has been going on for eight months, and I mean. We should have had it dealt with five months ago.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's why we're trying to move forward now, thank.
We should have, we have to spend some time.
I know, and it's, it's kind of bummer, but we're moving forward now. That's the main thing. Which is frustrating, but anyways, um, so those are good, good points. I know there was another one I wanted to talk about as far as what you mentioned.
Sure.
Um, that's good. Um, anyways, I guess that's, the council has more questions. I have questions. Yes, Debbie.
Um, Councilmember Debbie Baird, um, on the. Let's see, the yearly plan that you're asking for the retailers to submit.
Right.
I would like to limit that to the first two years, the first year to see if their. Plan is effective. The second year would be a reevaluation if any adjustments need to be made. But it takes city staff time to follow up on all of this, and I'd. Like to see it not be part of their regular duties if we can accomplish the same thing in a two-year format. And if there's any problems that arise after that point, be dealt with as needed. Because indefinitely means a long time to me.
Yeah, I don't want it to be.
So um. We we have a language in there for if if they begin having showing a lot of problems, then we can make them. Submit as a new plan um, at any time.
Right.
Um, and if you want to just limit it to the first year and second years for evaluation, uh, we can write it up that way, certainly.
Does that sound reasonable to the rest of council?
As long as we can ask for it, I mean, like, five years down the line, we can say, hey, this doesn't work.
Right.
At any time, this is no longer effective, we will reevaluate, yeah.
So in in conjunction to that, so, go ahead, does you have any other questions?
Sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
So in conjunction to that, that's my question is, um, as far as the plan, this plan, who. Reviews this plan? As far as city staff, is it, is it code enforcement? Is it actual, is, who's? Who does the actual review of this and who okay's this? So there's some, obviously some variables there that they, we can have somebody saying, this plan looks great to me, but may not be that great, so. I think you have a comment, Mr. Johnson?
The beginning of the ordinance defines her as a director appointed to do that.
Correct. At this point, it's code enforcement.
City manager. In defining this plan, so that's how we view it. My understanding also on the part of talking. That the code enforcement officer, that's the director of this program, at any time, if there is a significant problem. Can go to the city manager and declare their plan invalid. And they have to come up with a new one that is acceptable to the code enforcement officer, the city manager.
Okay.
So I think some of the protections you're asking for are.
In place.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We still got more readings, but we, this is how we clear, that's how we clean it up though, so yeah, this is perfect. Oh, Mr. Milton.
Um. So it's gonna be like, or first offices, the director of the ordinance. She. She would like to see.
So he can't hear you.
Has well, yeah.
She's gonna be the director of this. I don't think she's probably cheating because it's the first time.
Was she pumping? Uh, let's, yes, Willow, would you please come? Yes.
I have no idea if she's.
Um, Willow Martnell, Code Enforcement Officer. So I have seen it. I was included in the email. I was able to go through a little bit of it. Um, one of the things I was just bringing up with the Chief of Police was that. I believe being that this has been going on for the discussion, rather, of this ordinance has been such a long time in the making. When this was being currently spoken about in the beginning, I was directly working for the city manager. So now what we're doing is removing my chain of command. Which then creates another issue and a problem, in my personal opinion, being that completely bypasses my direct supervisor as the Chief of Police. Um, in regards to this, there's a couple of things that we're talking about, the locking wheels. Prime example, I have removed a locked wheel. Shopping cart from grocery outlet in the middle of the field in front of the casino. Um. I know that those things are gonna happen, but I have seen this. I do think that there are some things that need to be addressed. I don't know when your guys'. Additional meetings on this are gonna occur, if this is gonna be an open session documentation discussion or how it's gonna go, I would like to be. Um, involved in said discussions, being that, as Mr. McCoy knows, as well as I believe some of you also know. I have upwards of almost two hundred Walmart carts right now. Um. I have, in the past, spoken with the Walmart manager. I have spoken with the Rayleigh's manager. Um, I know that Mr. McCoy helps Rite Aid. They are supposed to come monthly to collect their carts. Um. Doesn't happen. On the regular, which is why I have such an abundance of carts. Um, so I I think that that is definitely need for additional discussion and fine tuning in that regard, and I would. Um, thoroughly appreciate the proper operation of command, including my direct supervisor.
So, yes, but. Uh. Question. So can you repeat what the one mile? Was it? I didn't hear you say something about a one mile from the property?
And that's what I heard, and I kinda had to giggle about that. Um, and the only reason I, I'm not trying to make a joke about it, but. They, if I were to only focus on carts that are one mile away from the stores that I'm addressing and handling and dealing with. The majority of the carts would not get picked up. Um, I, I have literally found Rayleigh's carts out by twenty-four seven fuel. I have found grocery outlet carts all the way down on West Side Road. Um, so that's three miles. That's literally the length of our town. Um, so if it's literally specified to, one mile away from the store's location, uh, the majority of the carts would not get picked up.
So that needs to be changed.
Yeah.
I would personally see the verbiage as within the city limits of Guayrika.
Yeah.
That's okay, no worries, no worries.
Well, so in conjunction to that, Willow, since we got you up there. Is there anything else that stood out that, since you're the one that honestly picking these up? Um, would have a better understanding on some of these issues? Um, is there anything else that stands out offhand? You know, I mean, I don't know if you've been able to read this, you know. Word for word and all this stuff, but um, is there something else that stands out?
Um, I almost, honestly, have only gotten to skim pieces of it because I've been um, highly inundated. With calls, but from what I have seen, like I said, I would like to be able to sit down with the the fine detail discussion before it actually gets voted on. Because there are things that do need to be modified. Um. I appreciate the two-year timeframe because if it is gonna fall on my shoulders to review and approve these plans. Um, I don't know that me individually am going to have the manpower to modify and manage. All of our retail stores' plans on an annual basis. Especially if they're not working.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just two questions. Um. First of all, uh, just so Willow knows, um, this went out to staff for comment and, um. But I think it got put on the um. City agenda sooner than staff had an opportunity to comment because. Councilmember McCoy had asked for it to be on this meeting, so that's why it's there. And second, I I don't know how the city manager feels about the chain of command issue. Um. Uh, normally, I would have left it at city manager, his designee, but um. Uh. So, up up to him to assert his jurisdiction and power or not.
Okay, so, that's, yeah, Mr. McCoy, go ahead.
Yeah, what I asked for, actually, I think was just an update. You gotta probably ask, um, I would, I would make a motion. That we table this, and we have the city attorney come down. And speak to us at another meeting in August or September and see if we can maybe get this voted on. You know, before the year is out, before it's, before we're gonna work on it a year. It seems like it's just, you know, to.
Yeah, at least two, at least two.
Way too long for us to, we spend our nose and waste our time.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's wasted money. We obviously have code enforcement out there collecting them on a daily basis, multiple carts on a multi, on a daily basis, and it costs us. Money, so we need to retrieve some of this money.
I went to Walmart, six times, six. And then the.
So I think, so here's another idea too, because I, I don't know if anybody else has any other questions.
Motion on the floor, just so you know.
Oh, I'm sorry, right?
Just saying that, you can, you can, if people don't want it, they can.
Good, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, this is Councilmember Joan Smith-Freeman. Councilmember McCoy, would you please repeat the motion?
The motion would be to table this.
Oh, okay.
And get Don Henyon, our city attorney, down here. And then we could put it on further agenda, maybe for like September, or something like that, and see if we can't get it wrapped up or something.
No.
Community council meeting, I, I mean. We've got, we've got workshops.
Yeah.
Going, we've got workshops planned up right now.
Mr. Mayor, and if we, if we give it a little time, it'll also give our staff a chance to look at it as well as us.
Yes.
And I'll be able to make additional comments.
Yeah.
I'll be able to see how to read it. I'll be able to put time specific to. Um, addressing that. I mean, I I know that I, obviously, I don't take this lightly, like, I know I need to. Have my input on that, and I know I need to definitely find the detailed information that needs to be altered and, you know, addressed. Um, like I said, it's unfortunately, we're, we're a bit busy.
So our city manager can work with staff.
So I guess, so in conjunction to this, 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 what what Paul says, basically, to table, we need to figure out a date. I'd say the first, you want to do the second.
Well, we're just, I'm just trying to give a time. With all due respect, Willow's gonna be in a date.
Once it's. I mean, we got to another, that's a month and a half away.
Then you will.
I don't, I don't think we need that much time myself. I think September seventh would be fine, but. I thought somebody. Well, basically, you're making the motions.
No, I'm not making the most of the time. You got, but I also, you know, here I'm pushing, 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 trying to get through, but it's already been put out to me. It's actually been almost two years.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's what I, I feel that as a council and and staff, we can, we can, we've got a good basis for this. I think we can pick it and figure it out. I mean, there's definitely some questions, and we can, you know, as a council too, we can call up Don and ask him questions about this beforehand. Uh, so we're not taking up quite so much time.
And have our our city manager and our attorney work together on.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, that's, we can ask questions to both of them, so it doesn't matter. We don't have to go through them. I mean, we can go through them individually, yes, so.
If I may, this is a partial comment. I put this on the agenda because at a prior meeting, I thought that was a request.
Nope, it was.
It was.
It was.
To get the ordinance on.
Yep.
Well, yes, it was a request just for an update. This is great.
Yep, most. So there was, you did fine. You did great.
Thank you. Um, there was no intent to first read, second read, or adopt the ordinance at this time. It's simply to get it out, get your comments, then return it to staff and the city attorney. All of staff, so we'll get everybody's comments.
Yes.
That hasn't been done yet. So I'm not necessarily apologizing, we aren't there yet.
Okay.
Uh, but we will get that. And we'll bring it back to you, and if you wish to attend that, maybe that's fine too. That's fine, not more than two counts.
Mr. Mayor, I would draw a motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so at this moment in time, I understand that you're returning it to staff and the city attorney.
Yes.
So that we can.
Sounds great.
Correct.
Address your request.
Correct, and these, and, and, and we can send you some other questions if we do read through this and find other questions.
And if you want to give those to me, well, before that, I would hope that we can bring this back to you before that thing.
Yeah.
There's. I don't see anything significant here.
No, I think it's just a little tweaks here and there, and we can get it going. The sooner the better, I feel, but. Um, I think, like I said, some of the, some of the valuable input I I feel was, is from Willow. Because she deals with this on a daily basis, so she has a lot of valuable input in this regards. The other detailed things that we're, that we're dealing with is, like I said, a few little tweaks of. Of, I feel, like, one of them was, uh, ten or more carts, because I know we talked about that, ten more carts. If any business has ten or more carts, that they have to go by that, not prior or future businesses. But it was all, every business, new or old. Um, and then there's other, like I said, other tweaks that we need to, to. Talk about too. So we'll send you those. Anybody else has any questions, we'll send it to you guys, and we'll move on from there. So basically, this does get, in a sense. Not necessarily table, but no decision has been made at this point in time.
Uh, city manager explained it well. Thank you.
Correct.
The notion has been a trial.
Perfect. Okay, so now we are on to. Number eight, new business, special Paul, and special possible, and we got, I do need to, though, do protocol real quick. Um, possible actions, Siskiyou scenic bicycle tour, and I do need to open it up to public comments first real quick. And then you can step up to the plate. So is there any public comments real quick on that? I'm opening it up to that. So we're tweaking things a little differently, I know. And if there's no public comments, then we will close public comments, and we will actually have our presentation.
Okay, very good. On page sixty of your packet, there's an introduction, but my actual letter is on page seventy-five. Um, because the one on page sixty actually has some misinformation. Based on the ride that we did this May first. And it's not gonna be the same for next May because we aren't gonna be doing all the COVID protocols and all of that. So, um, if you would look at page seventy-five. Um, to our city council members, on behalf of the Rotary Club of Guayrika. We're asking for a resolution allowing us to use Evergreen Horn Park. For the Siskiyou scenic bicycle tour to be held May seventh, twenty twenty-two. As you know, we held this event May first, twenty twenty-one, and it was very successful. There were three hundred and twenty riders from California, Oregon, Nevada, and Washington. And they were able to enjoy our beautiful city and county, um, without smoke. Despite COVID, we held a safe event using the COVID prevention guidelines, and our merchants and businesses benefited. From their stay here. Most of the visitors spent the weekend in Guayrika. Um, and that was a lot. We are requesting the use of Evergreen Horn Park on the day of the event, plus the option for riders to camp both the night of May sixth. Prior to the ride and the night of the seventh, following the ride. We also will have a picnic lunch served to the returning riders in the afternoon at Evergreen Horn Park. Between noon and five PM by caterer, following the COVID guidelines, whatever they are at the time. We're hoping to have three hundred and fifty to four hundred riders this year. And the riders return over many hours, so there's no large group meal. We also request permission to sell beer on the afternoon of the seventh. That's, um, that's a. Um, needs to be corrected on your copies here. Collect ride feeds from riders and sell T-shirts related to the rides. And this, um, coming ride will have five different rides. Last year, we had six, but we're cutting out the eight-mile ride. Um, there just weren't enough people interested in the, um, and. Two of the routes are exactly the same, the twenty-one and the forty. Um, the other rides, the sixty-seven, the hundred-one, and the thirty-nine mile routes are actually new routes. And, um. I think they'll be fun, and I think it attracts more riders here. You know, year after year to have different routes, and they see different things. We'll have all of our decks in a row, the insurance certificate. We'll have all of our decks in a row. The insurance certificate that is listed here was the one from last year. But we actually have to have a signed contract before we get the insurance and everything else done. So that is my request for a resolution. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll open up for council, council.
I don't have any questions. We have one more area here besides Dr. Duncan, and this has always been a great
Yeah.
Uh, uh, thing for our city and for a lot of people. They think that without the topic on shakes up a little bit. Different ride, you know, more like that sort of thing. And I just, I can't see us, you know, passing this up. So I would, I would go ahead and, I know people probably want to discuss it, but I'm gonna make a motion to adopt a resolution approving requests associated with the special event known as the Siskiyou scenic bicycle tour. And although, on the dates of Friday, May sixth, uh, twenty twenty-two and Saturday, May seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion, and I did have a comment. So can we open it for comments?
Yes, please.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you to Crystal. She worked night and day. Well, in between all of your patients, but anyway, she worked really hard on this, and this event was very, very successful, actually, last two years. But this was last, this year was the first one this time of year. No, that's two years.
Yeah, yeah, we attended twice.
And the timing is so much better than September because of smoke. So, and it was successful and it was really good for the town. So I think it's great and, you know, and kudos to you.
Yes.
Dr. Duncan.
Yes, thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? So we have a motion by Paul McCoy, a second by Joan. I'll go to roll call. Mr. McCoy.
Hi.
Jones. Roy Milton.
Hi.
And Debbie Barrett.
Oh.
And Dwayne Kegar.
All right. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Two. This again. Number eight, the discussion possible action, Guayrika Union High School Cross Country meets. Well, I guess we'll open it also up for any public comments on that one. True. That, so we'll close it for public comments, and, and I think Arthur is gonna be the presentation on this one. Yes.
Yeah. Uh, I'm Dave DeFoy. I'm the head coach for Guayrika High School Cross Country, and this event, possibly two races. Uh, one would be a league race, uh, which would be in the afternoon. The other one will be a joint high school, middle school race, uh, to get the junior highs in the area back into running, because they pretty much missed out all of last year. So, um, the use of Green Horn Park, from what I understand, have, we've been running cross-country races there since the mid-eighties. Uh, it's probably even longer than that, I'm not sure. Uh, but I know that the, the Elk Lodge one that I've reached out to to sponsor this race has been going on since eight-five, so we're trying to get it returned with an absence of last year. If anybody has any questions on anything.
Counsel, any questions?
I just have a comment. I'd just like to say thank you for continuing on with these races. I think especially now during the Olympics, it's really good to see some outdoor activities going on for our kids.
Yeah, and we just got dinged again, so any inside workouts have to be masked up again with the school. So this being an outdoor sport, and we just finished up our camp in gym, so we're starting to move and run. We actually ran the other day that green one. So the kids look forward to it. And the people that we've had come here before in the past, uh, the other schools like the Green Horn Course. I kinda wanna tweak it just a little bit this year, but it'll stay within the park. Make it a little bit more challenging for the more advanced kids, especially our kids.
Mr. Milton?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we have a, you wanna make the full motion, please?
Making motion to adopt a resolution approving requests associated with the special events known as the Guayrika Union High School Cross Country meets.
Councilmember Joan Smith Freeman, I'll second that. And I have to say with these last two items on the agenda, I have to say how proud I am that our beautiful park is being used so well.
Yes, it must be used.
Is Mr. Mayor, is it open for discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I do see that they're asking for a fee waiver has been requested, so is that going to be included in your motion?
Do we generally do a fee waiver?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we usually do.
Yes.
Second agrees.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. Uh, Mr. McCoy.
Hi.
Mr. Milton.
Hi.
Joan Smith Freeman.
Hi.
Debbie Barrett.
Hi.
Dwayne Kegar.
Hi.
So motions carried. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. All the best.
CHC, discussion possible action, chip seal week, and we'll open it up for public comment. No public comment at this time, so we'll close public comment and move to presentation by Cindy.
Can everyone hear me? All right, you can, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you may recall, in June, we adopted a resolution accepting the funds from the SB one fund for our annual chip seal project. And we submitted our project to the state, and our project includes Campbell Avenue and Sharps Road. Those two streets are also in the Karuk tribe's tribal transportation facility inventory, which allows them to assist us with funding. And last year, we had a collaboration with the tribe to chip seal Dove Lane, and that worked out very well. And we wanted to continue the tradition this year. So we created this memorandum of agreement that you can see. And the tribe transportation department presented it to their council in June, and it was signed by their chairman. And we're presenting it here so that council can debate and discuss and request that Mayor Keg sign so that we can go on with this. And if there are any questions?
Questions from the council?
Just, what's the difference between memorandum of agreement and memorandum of agreement? What's an MOL versus MOU?
Our city attorney can probably answer that better than I can.
I could barely hear it, but I guess the question was, what's the difference between a memorandum of understanding and a memorandum of agreement? Is that correct?
Yeah, an MOU and an MOU.
Yeah, no difference. Just different, different, um, people use different words.
Any other questions for council?
Motion, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum, tell me if I did correct of agreement with the Karuk tribe to share chip seal project works and costs on city streets.
Yes.
Now, that's, is that all we need?
I think so. No.
Just this one, yes.
This is council, Mr. McCoy.
Yes.
This is councilmember Barrett, I was the second.
Second. Call, Mr. McCoy.
Hi.
Mr. Milton.
Hi.
Hi.
Debbie Barrett.
Hi.
And Dwayne Kegar. Thank you, sweetie.
Thank you, Cindy.
We are on to D, discussion possible action, police chief recruitment. And we'll start off with, uh, any public comments on this before we move. No public comments, we'll close that, and we'll go into discussion possible action, police chief request authorization for interim city manager to execute agreement for recruitment of police chief. And I assume this is you first?
Yes. Thank you very much. We have been discussing how, thank you. I couldn't hear myself. We have been discussing how to move forward on the police chief appointment. And what staff has come to the conclusion that the quickest way to uh, move this forward would be to get an outside firm with professional contacts within the police community to do the best recruitment we can do. Uh, that's not intended at all to be a comment on your interim chief. Who is certainly welcome to apply if he wishes. It's just to meet the laws uh, that we have to comply with in this process. And to also recognize that interim appointments such as police chief and city manager, the city must show that you have a recruitment underway. And this is the best way to document that you have a recruitment underway to protect those interim appointments, P E R S, um, relationship. So we are recommending this on several levels. You can see that there, the costs associated with it, uh, best our human resources department came up with in doing this. Uh, we are recting the, recommending the low estimate which is a firm you're already familiar with who are presently conducting the city manager recruitment. You happy to answer any questions you may have?
Yeah, I'll open up the council questions. Council.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I might, I, I understand that this is so that we might comply with laws, but I certainly don't want our interim police chief to think that we are unhappy with him in any way. He's doing a great job. Thank you, chief. But I think it's a good idea for us to go forward. And, uh, and if we do work with the company that we're already working with, he's already, uh, familiar with our city and his, and his staff is. So it might be um, maybe perhaps the least expensive, because they've already developed some of the, you know, the information that we would need. So perhaps it would be the best idea to go forward, uh, using Avery and Associates.
Any other questions? Joan?
Oh, questions?
Do you have anything to add? Your question was.
I do, but I can't say it.
Yes, Mr. McCoy.
I would just, I wouldn't mind going with another. Say, I, I don't think our communication has been the greatest with Avery and Associates. I don't think our interviews have been, I don't think they've been fulfilling and finding information out. I think some of it's been short-circuited and, and done in a very circuitous way. And so I, maybe, not, it's not to say that they're not gonna do a good job of what they have now, but that I just, I'm not sure that I was, could stay with, with them. Well, and trust their judgment.
Yeah. I got some questions. So if anybody else, just McCoy or Debbie?
I'm actually comfortable with Avery, because I do think they have a good understanding of our feel for the community and they're making the decisions moving ahead based with our lifestyle and population.
All right.
Sure.
I didn't have a problem.
Yeah, I was with him for an hour, but I but forty-five minutes to an hour.
Yeah.
I had a good, I had a good experience.
Yes, so can you hear me?
My concern for is if he did it, that's when he won't say it. And he wasn't, and he's, he has not been, he's, I had an experience with him for an hour and a half, but I had the dogging to get it.
So my questions are, what does it, to, to do the due diligence to make it legal? Why do we have to go with a firm? Why can't we post it and do that instead of spending twenty grand? Or well, it can be upwards to thirty grand, yeah. So I'm not understanding why we have to go through an agency. Why can't we post it, um, through a number of different avenues? I know there's other avenues we can post it as, as a city, not necessarily go with a hiring agency to do that, so.
Uh, it, the issue is access to the candidate pool. We are, as you're aware, currently recruiting in-house for finance director administrative services, uh, department head and for community development department head. After some time attempting that recruitment, we have one possibly qualified applicant for one position, two possibly qualified applicants for the other. It's very difficult with resources available to us to attract or contact the candidate pool. These people do this for a living, and they have lists of people who are looking for this type of job, and they get to them and they get them to apply. They encourage them to apply in many cases. That's the only reason. If we could do it ourselves, I would certainly recommend that. I just don't think to get a adequate candidate pool, that you're gonna be able to do that with our human resources department. They do very well at all of the other levels where you're basically recruiting people who live in Guayrika. We seem to manage to do that. But when you're looking for those who have qualifications specific to department head level jobs, there's not a lot of those people living in Guayrika. They will be imported from somewhere else.
I, I understand. But I, I don't see spending that kind of money when, for one, I think we have a lot of candidates right in Siskiyou County that actually can step up to the plate and have no problem. I, and I wanna bring, you know, to attention of the council too, in this whole process, who stepped up to the plate for one thing. And who's filling in the gap. I want also, also remind the council to, who individual that stepped up to the plate has real strong contacts with the sheriff's department, with the DA, with everybody, ivory contact in Siskiyou County. So what I'm getting at is, I understand that we need to do our due diligence and try to recruitment, but we also have somebody that can step up to the plate right now. And I know we need to make it legal. I get that. We totally need to make it legal. I'm not denying that. But I think we're wasting twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars on doing all this, when we got somebody that can step up to the plate and do the job and do it well, and do it better than, I shouldn't say this, but better than most of the police chiefs I've seen that's come through this department. So this man has done a huge bonus for the city. And I think, you know, I think we're wasting money going outside and hiring for, I really do. So, that's. So you think.
But I, I if I, it's gonna be, that's his business, or he does or not. I didn't, I, I like, he's doing a great job, I think, but I know how it they say, well, he didn't put it out.
I, I realize that.
And I, if we can't even have that fast, we really have to hire firms that have money. Our rights going to post it on our job site, go to ND, wherever else in our city can do it. We're allowed to do that and not get in trouble. But yes, I, we're gonna save us that money and post a job in every avail that we can to cover us. And so to find out, so I do agree.
So there is other avenues that can be posted. There is, you can go through, there's other, and I'm sure Randy's gonna state that.
Went to the area of, do we legally have to do this? And the answer is no. Okay, I'm just saying by doing this out of an abundance of caution, you will have met every requirement and done it in any way that anybody in the community, the state uh, could not question. Okay, if we do it local, people are gonna question. If you're okay with that, you're okay with that.
I, I'm not comfortable spending twenty or thirty grand. We can, we can do it in-house as far as, put it out to the, to the area. So that's where I stand. I think it's ridiculous to waste that kind of money, waste the public money.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I have a concern for showing a lack of transparency in our decision-making in this. Uh, I don't know that the community will, would support the bias that might be established here as grateful and appreciative as we are and as qualified as the current police chief is. But it's not only for our protection. He needs the support of the community behind him. As the current police chief is, but it's not only for our protection. He needs the support of the community behind him. They need, he needs to know that they appreciate us doing due diligence, that he earned this on his own. Not from.
But they're not gonna be making the decision. You gotta remember that. They don't make the decision who who's the police chief. Mr. Manager makes that decision.
Yes.
So it doesn't matter who we get, we can get him from, as long as they're in the United States, we can get them from there, as long as they meet the qualifications. He's gonna make the decision. So it doesn't come down to the community making the decision, it comes down to him.
May I, Mr. Mayor? Do you remember, is it okay for me to speak?
Yes, okay.
Yes, I'm done.
I just have a suggestion. Yes, if I may. Um, do you remember when we went out for our fire chief? And we had citizens from the community and some staff on a team that helped with the interviews. I think that that would be appropriate for us to do, and you were talking about one person making a decision. I'm thinking that that. We could have some, I don't wanna say influence, but ability to choose. By getting some people from the community and maybe getting a person or two from council and maybe a few staff people. And I think that would show support as Debbie was talking.
Transparency.
Transparency and support for whoever wins.
I think, didn't we, I don't know who was present at that point in time. Didn't we, I don't think we went through a a hiring firm though, we just put it out.
Right.
And then we had it, we did our community, 'cause I sat on that community, so I know exactly what you're talking about. Um, and I think that's great. I think that's, I think that's a necessity, especially due to the circumstances. No, nothing against you. Mr. Manager, but um, we as a community will have to pick up the pieces if if you make the improper decision. So. I think, yes, the council does need to be part of the decision-making on this and some influence on this. Because we will have to live with that decision. And just like we did with the fire chief, which we're obviously very happy with, and I did have that input on that one. And that is something that's, like I said, because um, Mr. Johnson is only gonna be here with a short, for a short period of time. I said, I have nothing against his judgment, but he doesn't know our community, doesn't know who's lived here for last fifty years or last ten years. He has no uh, you know, incline of what's going on that way. So, yes, I feel that, yes, we do need to be part of that. A decision-making factor as a council, so.
Well, as a community.
As a community, yeah, absolutely. That's that's, we are, we represent the community and we want their input. And that's how that works. That's why we're here, is 'cause we want that. If it all just goes down just to the city manager making that decision. It's not this community's decision.
And a panel.
And a panel. Well, I'm just saying that's part of the community. We have played a part of the panel. If it comes down, the way the verbiage is on this, on decision-making, on who's. City manager is the one that makes that decision. So that's something we need to address as a council. Mr. McCoy?
Ultimately, as a stance, it is a city manager's decision.
Yep.
Can I query you on a point? That uh, some verbiage you said on looking for people to work in that building. You said you're promoting in-house, you're promoting in-house. Uh, have you thought of going outside of that building to look for somebody? I don't think you have enough people promote in-house. Are you are reusing that to speak to something else?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
If I said promoting, that was the wrong word.
You said in-house.
Yeah, the human resources recruits and I meant in-house using them. Not where they were recruiting. It's an open recruitment when they're. The the other part of that is having the council or the community involved in the hiring of department heads. When I have done that for the last ten plus years. It's always been, you're welcome to participate. I've set up a series of. Committees to ask particular questions that we provide ahead of time. Any councilman who wants to be on one of those committees is fine. No more than two council people on any one of those committees and that input is all put in, you know, taken together. As a part of the appointment process, I would bring it back to the council. Say, this is what I'm doing, this is what I'm recommending. Yes, you don't have final say on it, but if you have an objection, I'm gonna listen.
I guess.
So I mean, the council will be involved as much as they need to be involved uh in all department head appointments.
Well, I guess that's my concern. Like I said, nothing against you. I think you're very knowledgeable and bring a lot to the table. But you haven't been uh acclimated to our our community yet, so.
And that's the questions I'd be asking of the council in the process, whether I was here for ten years or not. I mean.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, the last decision-making that was pertaining to um, the chief and stuff was an art decision, so.
You know, it's not done that way anywhere anymore. I mean, all codes say that the city manager appoints. And does all the personnel processing for all employees, but anybody who, you know, wants to be there for any period of time. Doesn't follow that to the letter anymore. And certainly I wouldn't, certainly the. Your new city manager will be queried about that during the process and won't either. I mean, it's a partnership.
So getting back to what this goes to and what I what I stated, and now Joan's kinda, I don't know if she's going to that. Side, but to do in a, instead of doing a recruitment firm, but doing an in-house recruitment and then we have a panel. I would be more, definitely more receptive to something like that than wasting twenty or thirty grand. Yes, Joan.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that our attorney is unmuted. Did we ask him if he had any comments on this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, he just disappeared.
Don, did you hear the question?
Oh, yeah. Are you asking me to respond to um how Randy would approach the thing or to the fact that. Should you do a formal recruitment versus your uh open and transparent um internal recruitment and interview process?
Is this something we should be discussing in closed session?
Um, this um isn't a sensitive issue, so um. I I I I think I think you're safe in having me respond to that. And um, let me just say that as Randy mentioned. You don't have to do a formal recruitment in order to um have uh a sufficient record. That you've got a recruitment open. You know, if you're gonna put a uh a advertisement in western cities. You can put an advertisement in western cities. I'm sure there's a special um. Uh, group for um law enforcement police chiefs. Um, and then there's uh. Cal ops and a and a number of different um organization where you can solicit applicants from outside of the pool. And whether you decide to spend the money on a professional recruiter or whether you decide to do it in-house. Is purely a political and financial decision by the council. If there's not a a legal impediment, imped- impediment to us in any manner in that this case.
Perfect, thank you, Don. So, back to our. So, anyways. I think 'cause it was like you stated, it was western cities, there's other law enforcement agencies that we that we can submit that open, you know, applications to. That they can apply for and do that. So I I I totally.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor, what are you saying, Paul?
Because.
Right.
This interim chief will um invalidate his retirement.
So, right, right now, there's a, uh, because of the COVID thing, there is a stay on the nine hundred and sixty hours. And so that there's no problem filling. That's, that's, that's one of the special exceptions and they keep changing it. Um, but um, the last order I read. Um, they still had that nine hundred and sixty hour thing suspended. The only hard stop I saw was um. Uh, a one-year revolving door um uh limitation where you couldn't rehire a. Uh, uh, and annuated uh within one year of the date that that they retired, so.
There there are two law issues. The one being referred to, the nine hundred and sixty hours is presently rescinded, but could be. Put back into place at any time. So that's, we're good on that area. But the second one is that before you appoint. An interim, you are supposed to have a recruitment underway. So that part is why I'm asking you to make a decision.
That's the urgency, but that's the recruitment underway means we post it and it's posted and then that's that sort of thing. So there's, that leaves it open, correct? What you're saying, so correct.
Then there's a third one, Randy's law that it's gonna, there's no one ice cream that's gonna make them, give him to stay longer than he's.
Exactly.
It's okay, Randy.
So, uh, I, since I don't, I would motion to to go that, it's such a want to say. If you're not gonna make a motion, I'll make a motion.
If if your consensus is not to go with the outside recruiter, you don't have to do anything. Just move to the next item.
Okay, yeah.
But we, but we still need to make a decision to go forward, right?
We we made the decision.
Is that the consensus?
Well, the city manager will make that decision and did some time ago by bringing this to, yeah. We will start the recruitment tomorrow.
Okay, so we need to, like Debbie just said, we need to, I need to get a consensus. Paul, do you agree or disagree? Moving to not do, go with the recruitment agency?
Um, if 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 we. Um, yeah, if it means not using Avery Associates.
Okay. She doesn't obviously.
Yes.
I, yes.
As long as it looks like it's it's.
Yes.
Otherwise, we'll have to reconsider.
No, we need to move forward as rapidly as possible.
We will move it forward tomorrow so that we can absolutely document that we have a recruitment underway so we can continue work.
Thank you. That's what we need here. Awesome. Thank you. Yeah. All right, then we are on to uh eight E, discussion possible action. City Hall hours will open this to public and public comments. Close a public discussion part of this and open it to the city and send prior city council direction to. This closed city hall for public access on Fridays. Who's gonna speak on this one? I guess I should have looked. Is that you, Mr. Johnson?
Previously, the council asked uh what would need to be done to ensure that city hall would be open to the public on Fridays. So after research was done, it was determined that a prior city council um authorized and directed that. Uh, it'd be closed on Fridays, but for a trial period, not forever. Um, there was no evaluation after the trial period. That was supposed to come back to the council and it just continued. So at this point in time, uh, if it is desire of the council. That city hall be open to the public on Fridays, all you need to do is rescind that prior council direction.
Is there councilman's comments?
I have a question now. Does this include the four o'clock?
That's a, that's a different issue. And what you have in your MOU says the hour shall be eight to five. Uh, and we have several other documents. At some point in time, a prior council authorized department heads. If there was a need or a convenience for a particular employee to create different hours. City Hall is gonna be eight to five for the majority of the employees. If there is a issue, the, a department head who has. Or a, an employee who has a special need can explain that to the department head and get off occasionally during those hours, but no. It's back to eight to five. You don't need to take any issue on that. I sent a memo to the department head. They've explained it to their employees.
And when is that start?
Uh, yesterday.
After we make, if we make this decision, does it would be immediate?
Yes.
I said if, if we rescinded the prior city council direction, which was long before any of us, I don't even know when that happened.
David Simmons.
I think it was two thousand fourteen.
Yep, David Simmons.
It was before November, because that's when we took office until twenty fourteen. Interesting. Uh, anyway, so we would have to actually rescind that. Uh, for that to happen. So are you looking for motion?
Ma- Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Um, I just mentioned that, you know, if you, if you look at the resolution, it's got a specific time period and it. And it ends on, like, September fifth, twenty fourteen. So I don't think you need to rescind your resolution. All you need to do is direct the city manager, if you want to, to, that everybody's going back to work just the same as your resolution.
Okay, we're done.
Is that the consensus of the council then?
It's sunset.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's consensus account, the council system. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to number nine, city manager and staff reports. I have no, we need to open that up to the public.
I have no reports at this time.
Okay. No staff?
Um, well, the fire chief wanted to report that today was his birthday.
He did receive a nice little present, didn't he?
Nice water tender.
I know, that's a, that's an ultimate present.
Well, and I just, I guess I wanted to report, it's also my birthday, so.
And you get to spend it with us.
And I bet your wife's real happy.
Yeah.
Uh, she's still talking to me. Chief, anything?
He, he's been busy. He just wants to go home and go to sleep.
Well, a finance committee met this afternoon.
Oh, okay, good, good.
The finance committee went this afternoon, looked at a tentative budget and sent that budget back with the city manager. To um, uh, to 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 just have the department heads go over it again and see if there's, you know, if there's anything that they absolutely can't hold there. Something that that could be put off for another year.
Yeah, I'm out of staff.
And we also mentioned that, you know, once, once that happens, if it goes back to staff, if it comes back, then we would like to bring it.
Yes. I'm, I'm out of staff.
And I will open it up for councilman statements and request. I'll start with you, Paul, since you're.
Um, I will say, I again, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna say this so everybody can hear it, anybody, anybody that's listening. I saw my third incident today of of a pedestrian pushing the button, that lights on in cars just like.
Yep.
I think we still need to look at that. We need to do it, but I think what's kind of really slow, not right there, is the calling, the lane calling.
All right.
Right.
People are blowing it, even with the lights going, kids sit there, you know, and I'm slowing down and they're just.
Oh, no.
Um, I want to introduce somebody. I actually was uh, went over to look for some birthday presents for my daughter who's uh turning twenty-one. Uh, next week and.
All right on.
I went to a place called Camp Siskiyou.
All right on.
And I just wanted, I bought these, don't worry, don't worry. Um, I'm, I'm gonna give the girls the ladies. You guys can trade around, I'm gonna give you those. And I didn't get one for you, I'm sorry. Um, those are his stickers, but he's got everything there. And I mean, and it is, you know, he's got the greatest hat that says, instead of saying straight out of Compton, it says, straight out of the woods. He told me he sold out, but it's a neat little, uh, it's a nice store. Continue to go well for him, he is open every day but Sunday and Monday. Correct? Correct? And he's got lots of stuff there, including candy. Everything is local. And what's your name, Sam?
Sam Ball.
Sam Ball. And he and I had a great, I've been in a couple times, had a great talk, but I had to do stuff for my daughter in New York and it was, it was just the perfect thing. They got T-shirts, he named, Sam's Got It. He just, you know, a decent upcoming and I said, I was gonna get these stickers to give you guys. You know, to help promote.
Paul and thank you, Sam.
People need to see you, so, and he's at the old Jason Suter's old monument company.
I've been by there, I've seen it and I'm beginning to stop, so I will.
I keep saying I'm gonna stop and then I don't.
I know.
And I've stopped twice, you know, to get stuff from family members.
And it's right here, the flashing lights.
Yes, it is. Yes, thank you. I encourage you all to check it out. That's awesome. Mr. Milton?
Almost every day.
I'll be there every day.
At the hamburger booth.
I'll be at the hamburger booth.
For clarification, the Friends of the Fair remodeled the beer booth, but the Lilly Foundation supported the remodel of Winey Mahal and the Kitchen, which is now a state certified. With the certified kitchen, please remember that. Tell your friends.
Thank you. Joe?
Oh, well, I'm going to be at the fair as well. I've volunteered at the Friends of the Fair booth. I'm also volunteering at the hamburger booth that the Elks put on. That money also goes back to the community. Not directly to the fair, but it goes to Boy Scouts and it goes to the high school, it goes to sports, it goes to many things in the community, which is really cool. So I'm working almost every day of the fair. A volunteering, not getting paid, no money, no. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know, I'm sorry that nobody could be part of the, our division, our Northern California Division of the League of Cal Cities, as they call it. It was, it was really interesting. One of the speakers was from the water, at the state water board, it's a private foundation that, that, that has memberships all throughout the state of California. And they talked about the water crisis is horrible. It's not just here, it's throughout the state of California. It's horrible. And there's a bill right now. It's SB one twenty-nine and it's regarding a five point one billion dollar package to help farmers and municipalities that are running out of water. We are very fortunate that we have the water that we do from Fall Creek because our water has sustained us. And if you talk to Rob Taylor, we've never had a shortage. It's kind of close, you know, a time or two, but we're very fortunate. They, you know, they did talk about, they call us the Headwaters. Because as you know, you know Sacramento River starts in Mount Shasta and literally comes out of the mountain right there at the, at the park in Mount Shasta, which is pretty cool. So they talked about the Headwaters down there. And then they also talked about the Pacific Flyway and the fact that there's no water. I don't know if you're all aware of it, there is no water for the birds right now up in the Tulley Lake area, which is part of Siskiyou County. Uh, and drinking water quality is suffering. Algae bloom up in that area is horrible for the fish and for the humans alike. So we had quite a lengthy discussion on that, that was really interesting. And then we also had a presentation by a woman by the name of Melissa Keehne. Or ILG, and I have her email address if anybody wants it. And ILG puts on trainings. If you either pipe them in, you know, through here, they can come up into member cities and we are a member city. And so they were talking about, oh, the, the things that are happening at all levels of government, partially because of COVID and situation. But increased partisanship, polarization on all levels of government, single issue advocates, hard to build relationships, increased negative comments, continued crisis management mode at all levels of government. And so she had, she had suggestions and she also has some things that, that she can get out to cities as well as counties, attributes for effective councils and effective government. How to develop a sense of team, have clear roles and responsibilities, honor relationships with staff and each other, conduct effective meetings, hold themselves, in other words, council members hold themselves in the city accountable and the council members hold themselves accountable and responsible for adhering to operating protocols and codes of conduct. So I would like to suggest they're talking about norms, working together with integrity, civility, consensus building, sharing information and avoiding surprises, disagreeing agreeably and professionally and the importance of, of having facilitated discussions. And she suggested governance handbook. So I would really like for us to work on our own handbook. I was really surprised that we don't have a handbook for council members. So they have copies, I've got four cities copies from them and then this woman from ILG, she has a template as well. And so I'd like for us to take a look at that. And all of us agree to, to adopt one of those and then work within that. And also she had a suggestion for self-evaluation of council annually or biannually to rate ourselves as unsatisfactory, could improve, satisfactory and excellent. And, and to have study sessions on strategic planning and assessment. And I think it's a good idea. We have not had a strategic planning session for four or five years.
Yes, yes.
It's been a while.
It was before Dwayne, wasn't it?
And you were on the planning commission and planning commission was.
No, no, I was.
You were on council.
I was on council, I just got on council.
So anyway, that's something that I'd like for us to look into and do. I know that we have lots of.
In those slow times?
But I do think that it's important for us to adopt a code of conduct and, and, you know, work on what works for our council within, within what other councils are doing within the state.
That's interesting. Randy, have you, on the other councils and everything, have you, have you witnessed any of these council guidelines or whatever? You know, basically what Joan's talking about on different avenues, have you witnessed that in other cities?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I normally want to say unfortunately, yes. Yeah, the, the code of conduct stuff is, is great. I don't want to be totally negative here, but my experience is the council meets several times. You put something together that you can all build consensus on and then you ignore it. For those councils that actually pay attention to it and continue to pay attention to it, it works great. It makes everything, you know, very predictable for yourselves, for the public and for staff. But I haven't had universal positive experience. Putting one together would be a piece of cake. You can either have somebody help you do that or you can call two or three of the cities in Siskiyou County that already have them.
Are they, so they, are they doing it in Dunsmere?
Yeah.
Are they? Okay, that's interesting.
And, and not always being ignored in Dunsmere, but sometimes.
Yeah.
Mount Shasta, totally ignored.
Grass Valley is one, Grass Valley is one that we have one and there's. In Compton, what did you say about?
Straight out of Compton.
Straight out of Compton, yeah. Anyway, I, I have a copy of four of those, which I can share with you, but I also wanted to get her template. Not hers, but the ILG. And ILG is the training arm of League of Cities and as well as CSE. I would be happy to do that. Would you like to work with me on it?
Absolutely. I read all of them, I liked two of them.
All right, thank you. That's my report.
Every year?
Uh, yeah, every year. We have to keep our executive, chief executive officers straight back.
Well, and I think part of that is good because, at least to bring it up, I don't know. Having to speak, if you don't mind, as soon as I get done. Anyways. Bringing that up, because I mean, things change. I mean, prime example as far as strategic planning and stuff is, like we got hit with COVID. I mean, that changes the dynamics on how we're looking at a lot of different things. So I think evaluating some of these things on an annual basis probably does make sense. I, obviously, you've seen a lot more than some of us, Mr. Johnson, have you, can you, some of the other cities, do they do that on an annual basis? Or is it something that's, what, two years or?
It's been my experience where this works on a annual basis is the council began a strategic plan in February.
Right.
And the reason you did it in February, that gave direction to staff on preparing the budget. Then you reconfirmed everything with adoption of the budget and then you evaluated staff's accomplishments, budget accomplishments. You know, February of next year and that's how you created what you're doing. Normally, when these, those who are strategic planners will tell you, once you come up with your goals and objectives, you put them on the wall of the council chambers so that everybody gets to see them and everybody gets to comment on your progress or lack thereof on more than an annual basis.
Yeah, that makes sense. That, that makes perfect sense because that's there all, all the time.
I think a lot of that comes succession planning. Because if they had succession planning, we wouldn't be where we are right now, trying to hire, not necessarily a chief and, and, and a city manager, but we're hiring people within the building and succession planning would have allowed us to have known where we wanted to go before somebody says. And that should come hand in hand in the strategic.
So I think as far as. Good point as far as timing though, I mean, right now might not be the best timing.
You can do a strategic plan anytime, but it's, it's tough to build it into your budget when you're not working on the budget. You have a budget that went through the budget committee today based on, I don't know where the goals and objectives came from. I'd have to ask staff, I'm sure they have their own department by department by department. And then a lot of the budget is, you know, you don't have a lot of ability to be creative. If you get a grant, you get to do that grant. Yeah, so. Are you, are you meeting your goals and objectives? You don't know unless you have goals and objectives.
Debbie, I wasn't laughing, you know, I was laughing because I'm looking at Randy and I said, see, you know, I'm looking at Randy going, you know, he's only here. But we could still, why don't we shoot a talk about it in September, October? Maybe see if, as, as our city manager said, we'll see if we can set something out that way. We know that we have on the back burner and we feel better about that, that we can really impress it after we get through September or something like that.
And maybe we can start looking for a facilitator or seeing if, last time we paid a facilitator. Through ILG, we may have membership that covers.
I've been paid to do that. I love doing that. It, it's very difficult for the city manager on staff to do that because you have to get a little, you know, pushy with the council sometimes.
So are, are you, are you willing to do that?
Close to leaving? Then you can just push me out the door at the end of the day. So, no, yeah, that's fine. It's not, it's not really difficult, it's just an exercise in communication.
So do we want to shoot for October then? Because I mean, September might be a little soon.
Because we've got to get, and then we can shoot for it by maybe December, January.
Oh, I see.
Or October, November.
Yes, I mean, we kinda shot ourselves in the foot right now. So I mean, going much earlier than probably even January or February is gonna be too early because you want it ready for the next July.
That's true.
So the process that I see, if you're seriously going down this road, is that I start with department heads and get you a list of what is actually happening, what could be happening. And then what they see is long-term goals and objectives and then you manipulate that. Okay, you either agree or you don't agree, or you put something else in. That's, strategic planning doesn't necessarily start top down.
This was her time and we totally stole her time.
Reddick was still talking when you started talking again, Paul. So I need to, what was the last thing you said? Thank you.
I, I agree. I think the last one we did was in the fall.
I know we had it down at the.
The other thing I just remind you, you have six management positions and four of them are leaving or not here.
You had the reminders.
More information you can get now.
No pressure.
And that's, I agree, if we can get more input from them before they leave would be very crucial to future. So please, Debbie, continue.
Nobody mentioned the Lola meeting, it was a nice. Nice event in beautiful downtown Dunsmere. I, I always enjoy getting together with the other cities to see what they are working on, what's worked and what hasn't worked is. I, I think the things that fail are just as informational as the things that succeed. So that was a good meeting. The fair, Corey covered it, but the one thing he missed was if you want to volunteer. I know we've got somebody helping out in the bar. It's a lot of fun and we still need volunteers for the information booth and a few more for the beer booth. So give me a call and I'll give you the chairperson's phone number. I don't want to put it out over the air, but, okay.
And my husband is volunteering the information.
Excellent. A few times, I hope. Oh, good. Okay, and the other thing was, last Tuesday was the Call Your Information and Interpretive Board meeting over in Tulley Lake. Okay, and the other thing was, last Tuesday was the Call Your Information and Interpretive Board meeting over in Tulley Lake. That's a lovely drive, and coming back around, I didn't get home till eleven. I did not realize they have so much fog over there when you're coming back. Holy cow. I, yeah, that was.
That's why they call it Tulley Lake.
Yeah.
How was, how was the, I know that Whitney Creek was overflowing and stuff, did you help that?
Well, what was interesting, yes, it was the flash flood warning, so I actually went, I went A twelve to ninety-seven, and they had it blocked going from that junction towards weed.
Right.
So, but I saw on the report that came across the phone that it said mudslides one to eight feet, and I'm thinking, oh my God, that's pretty bad. Do I want to go this meeting or not? But it was a good meeting. There were really, actually a great meeting, like twelve people were there. But I was able to meet the Lava Beds National Monument Director and the Tulley Lake, Tulley National Monument.
Of life area.
Um, yes, and they have a new district person coming in that's kind of cool. But anyway, it was a very productive meeting, and it's always nice to have people there that can actually say, what do you need, and really follow through with it, and they're one of our better, great sponsors. So it was good. Go see the lava beds, it's fun. That's it.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to add, obviously, the, I just want to thank Randy and Arthur for the agenda, even though it was changed up a lot for us, councilmen, it's, I think it's, I think it can help keep us structured in certain ways, so thank you both for putting the extra.
Liz, Liz was also.
Yes, thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
Yeah, just for, I mean, it's, it's good to have, to keep us on our toes, too. Change things up is, is good for everybody. Want to add that we have a homelessness meeting tomorrow at one-thirty, Behavioral Health, for no problem, again. Not a lot's going on there lately recently, but we'll have some updates on some stuff that's going on through behavioral health, some funding and stuff, so that'll be good. And then, of course, we have our meeting Thursday evening, as a reminder too, here, at the council chambers on our homelessness, so we can discuss. Found a permanent location and have some updates on that. We got some good updates on that, and that was really, worked out really nice. Hopefully, we can move forwards in a speedy way. And then we'll hopefully have a little bit of updates on a temporary, but I think most encouragement is the permanent location. Other than that, like I said, everybody kind of said what was going on in the community events, they're looking forward to that. I'm sure, I think my wife's already signed me up to work at the beer booth or something too, because I know she was in communication with them. So I'm sure I'm working one or two nights too, but.
And there's only going to be two of us at a time.
So, yeah, that mine, all this media adjourned, thank you. There is no closed session, I'm sorry, no closed session.